All good. Call to order, the fiscal year 2021 Order County Commissioners Budget Meeting Tuesday, June 8th at 2:00. Always want to start by invocation, I'll ask Commissioner Barnacass on the lead.
Dear Father God, dear Lord, thank you for another day in life, thank you for another beautiful day. Oh, we ask you bless our men and women that's on foreign soul that we have the privilege that we have today. Tell us some guys as we conduct business for our county and our citizens that may be a blessing to them and to you, we ask all of us in your name, amen.
Please continue standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which expands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there actually a copy of the agenda anywhere? Motion for approval of the agenda.
I don't really want to know.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All right, we move on to item one, the adjustments to do fiscal year 21, 22 recommended budget.
Okay, these adjustments came in after we had completed the budget. Regional SOAR, we need to add 88,932 to the contractual services due to the contract with the PACE. And then the assistant, the new assistant county manager, slacks clerk before, we can reduce that salary line and Sam fringes 1,221. Social services made me aware that they were not going to do the family caregiver program, so I took the expenditure out and the revenue, that's kind of just a zero. And senior citizens got additional aging monies, that's HCCBD, home community care block grant of 8,571, and those are the where the increases need to be on the revenue side. All it weighs on call for emergency call, $4,000 need to be added to their budget, a line item. E911, we got the letter and they reduced our appropriation from the state of 77,562, but we can use fund balance to cover that, so. And then elections came in today, and he wants $8,040 added to his maintenance, we had reduced it, and that would be if he had to have a second primary, had to have those machines, whatever he has to have done to him to do the maintenance on it, called maintenance, but calibrating or something. And those are all the adjustments that I have at this time, that I know all, nobody else is contacting me.
Do you have any questions, comments on this? All right, move on to item two, the revenue overview.
I've got this up on screen, plus it's behind your green tab in your book, so you can look at it or see, make notes of whatever. Revenue projects, revenue projects remain conservative, primary based on collections for the year compared to budget amounts. County school system sales tax revenues are up slightly. Holding inadequate county fund balance is crucial in reducing financial risk, maintaining the county's high rating. Tax rates remain 31 cents for general fund, 31 cents for the school current expense, 4 cents for the dedicated, haven't changed that new school, high FTEC fund, instead of dedicated fund, 8 cents for the fire department.
Are we going to ask questions that we covered?
Yeah, I'll tell you, just get ahead. No, get ahead, no, that's probably a question for.
This just shows percentage of the budget where the revenues are coming from. 31.39% is abnormal, 1721 is other taxes and licenses, unrestricted revenues is 1.36, restricted is 19.15. Permits and fees is 1.06, sales and services is 11.78, other revenues is 9.30, and fund balance is 8.75%. That was just for general fund, excuse me, and then this one combines all the funds, general fund, health, title 19, dedicated, haven't changed that. Little health and school current expense, this is how the revenue percentages run there. You see, abnormal is our biggest revenue for all these funds. I'm going to re-balance all these figures, due to the rebalance evaluation, the additional revenue that's come in is 1,626,934 over last year. Of course, our percentage went up some from last year. And then the new school dedicated, high tech fund, 5834, what the additional funds will be going into it. You can see the comparison of all those figures. Anybody have any questions? And this is the motor vehicle. We get, the county and schools get 30,356, and the new school dedicated funds get 3,00917 based on the estimates that I was giving for motor vehicles. Sales tax, sales tax in March was up, was currently 971,000 ahead compared to March of last year. Anyway, I need to sit my sheet, I made some notes on, as of April, we're up 676,199, which is 11.16% over last year as of April. So, sales tax wasn't affected by the COVID like we, like we thought and like the association and some of them thought it was going to be.
Your protect and Julia, increase as far as sales taxes, this is 1,240,000 as of the, as of March.
And this shows what I think we'll collect as of June 30th, based on our budgets. That's the, that's not revised budget, that budget that was approved by the board, that budget amount that's on this sheet. We have revised that some, that's in there.
Does anyone have an explanation for why it went up so much during COVID? Whether it will stay that high when not?
No, they not said.
They sold a lot of toilet paper.
I think people were ordering online, and people were ordering online.
I was about to say, we finally got the online orders in, this has got that into correct.
Sales tax now, yeah.
And that started back last year, right?
Yeah.
Point of delivery, sales tax, that is point of delivery.
Yeah.
So, I mean, has anybody done any analysis to what it's going to look like when we're not in COVID?
I haven't.
I mean, is anybody outside here, anybody, I mean, you just assume it's going to be?
Association or none of them's given us any guidance.
Well, you're estimating it based on what happened during COVID, right?
What we're doing right now.
So, you're going to use this actual as to base it, your new estimate? Yes, even though we don't know why?
I mean, I didn't do it, I just, I did a conservative amount, but, you know.
You didn't take much off, though. I mean, so, I'm just, you know, I'm just kind of curious, you know, if there's some hidden thing in there that generated a lot of revenue that won't be there when COVID's gone.
I figure everybody would still be ordering online, they found out it's just easier than going to.
Yeah, probably so.
To the stores and stuff.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see.
Well, stimulus money, maybe they spend it, you know?
Actually, last night, I was, I was reading an article that was saying 70% of Americans have not spent their stimulus check as of now.
One thing I would say is I do believe, even though they realize they were in COVID situation, people continue to make a lot of improvements to their homes.
Yeah. Of the interest rates, I was.
I was really bad in that. We refinanced our home during COVID situation. The place we deal with, they just, it's a deal we, we can't turn it back.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of things going on.
I'm just kind of worried, not worried, but if we have.
We make a big increase in our estimate based on this big increase, and then some kind of behavior changes once COVID's gone, it may not there, we'll see.
Well, I had to say.
I don't have any other way than to estimate it, so.
I had to say the only thing I see going down is like new construction, maybe people backing off that, and maybe see if the market starts leveling out, and prices come back down due to production catching back up. Because that's one thing that our company has seen in probably about the last three weeks, it's starting to drop off now, because people are starting to see, I'm paying 10 times the amount I should be paying when I paid last year. So, a lot of people are starting to wise up now and backing off a little bit on that part, but besides your everyday stuff, food and everything else, no, they ain't going to drop
And this is the recommended, what I'm budgeting. 2,009 for Article 39, 2,002 for Article 40, 700 for 42, and then that, that 1,910,000, that's based on that figure that we get, I don't know if it's going to go up and down, I've not heard anything. One year it went up some, then one year it went down a little bit, so I just base it on what we get from that. And like I said, I've done conservatively, I've tried to think about, you know, what if people stop buying a whole lot of stuff, so I've just tried to remember your main income comes in after the fiscal year, so you can't budget that because all available for budgeting at time, kind of the budget. This bill sales tax is also up, 118,237 as of March, and it's up 225,84113, 12.98% for them, that's to be used for capital or debt payment. That's by general statute, so I base their increase based on estimates, I'm going up $440,000 on their estimate last year, so. Like I said, I do them, I try to do them conservatively, and kind of look at what the percentage went, is, went up every year, and try not to go over, so in case we don't get it. And I also used to, the association would say, oh, it's going to go up 5%, and a lot of counties and cities would go up, use that figure, and then they won't get that 5%, that's what got them in trouble. I've always based it on what we collect, I never used the state's percentage.
Good policy.
Because that just, revenue items of interest is just, the projections from the state on health and DSS, they give me those, we're still getting the IRS interest refund for QZs and QZs. Those are, and the interest income estimate, I had to go way down on that because the feds have lowered the rate, so I'm not getting anything on our money anymore. I mean, even if you do a CD, you're not getting anything. And then proceeds for financing is 885,653, we're doing an ambulance, computers, jaws of life, device, all those systems with the heating and air, free buildings that's supposed to save money on our electric bill, zero turn lawnmower, and a tractor for solid waste. And inmate reimbursement, they estimated 300,000, the debt payments, 261,920, that gives you 38,080 for operations. You know, these are the funds that they said they could pay the debt for that expansion, and they are. Budget recommended appropriated 3,995,000 from fund balance, just believe about a 16.28% fund balance per the audit. Recommended appropriated 440,000 from lottery funds, which looks like we're still getting about that much, we're not getting any increase. The transfer from the dedicated fund for the debt payment, 2,58973 for the early college and schools, 311,957 for the early college operating expenses, and an 89,200 for Poplar Springs Elementary operating expenses. That was part of the financial model that we done by EDC. Possible revenue adjustments, I mean, that great, we know we'd increase fees for EMS, animal control, environmental health planning, those are some things you can look at. Could also consider changing a fee for farm inspections and clam reviews, could also consider increasing dog, non-spayed neutered dogs. A conservative recommendation is not to do these, but this just gives you some food for thought on what you could do with some other. Revenue fund balance is within the normal range, estimated fund balance after 2021 probably shouldn't be around 22.43 as the audit unassigned fund balance of 70,052088, or 18.35% as of June 30th. At this time, it is unknown how much, if any, of the 4,000,231,298 vested fund balance will be used. If the fiscal year 2021 appropriation is not used, then the percentage will increase. Advised appropriated fund balance is 4,402833 as of April the 30th of 21, estimated used fund balance as of 4/21/21 is about $2 million or more, estimated fund balance be 10,00749, which will be about 22.43%. This estimate will change with the audit due to, it is unknown what any will be pulled back for expenditures as of June. Please remember, this is an estimate to my best ability.
We won't stone you if it's wrong, so. I said, we won't stone you if it's wrong.
Julia, I know there's some worry in one of the fund balance estimates, I don't know if I have it right, but was saying possibly down around 16.47 or something.
Yeah. That's part of the, yes, if you.
So, if we fund, we were funding that, but the budget is proposed, we would have a 16 point.
Approximately 16, yeah.
Is it 2028?
16.
16.28% fund balance.
That's if we go revenue neutral, correct?
Revenue neutral? We do, that has nothing to do with revenue neutral.
You talking about the budget, would drop, like if we go with proposed, budget's going to drop our.
Unbalanced to 16.28.
Right.
And that's what you're saying, right? Okay, I'm confused.
I'm saying.
About the 22%, is it 22 or 16?
I based that 16 off the audit. Just I'm doing, I'm not taking away the 3,000, 3,00995 that we appropriated.
As of right now.
Right, Jake, my lawyer, I'm trying to get over to somebody is 22% at this time.
Yeah.
However, if we funded the entire 60 million and so on dollars, that is your recommendation. If we funded that 60 million something, the estimation is it would drop down to somewhere around 16.28. So, that gives us the knowledge of where we're at, and if we were to fund the entire thing and not cut anything, it would be around 16.28.
Which I'll show you.
Where's my 95? But in all seriousness, that is what we're saying.
That's correct.
It'd be at 16.28.
If you don't do any cutting.
If we didn't cut one thing.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Julia, I got another question.
Okay.
The, what does the LGC calculate our monthly operating cost? They take the approved budget and divide it by 12?
Through the LGC?
Yeah, we're supposed to keep three months' operating costs in fund balance.
Oh, yeah.
So, how do they calculate our monthly?
That's supposed to be your normal operating, that one includes capital?
Okay, so.
That's subtract off your capital and.
Just the capital, equipment stuff?
Yes, because that's not, that's really not a reoccurring item much, and using by certain equipment every year, it's not the same piece of equipment, unless it's like an ambulance or something like that, but.
Okay, so, would you just check this before our next meeting maybe and find out, so we can calculate what our three months' operating expansion should be, would be on this budget if we approved it? And also, would it be based on the 45 million or whatever it is at the county part of this, or would it be based on the county plus what we give the school system? That make sense? What would you base it on?
See, the school system wouldn't be in the general fund anyway.
Okay, so.
It's in a separate fund.
No, but did, I just want to make sure that if.
Yeah, but I think you would have to incorporate that, because you're going to have to pay that too.
You would incorporate the school.
Yeah, because they combined the funds together.
Okay, so then about, then it's 60 million you're working with, you divide that by 12, and you take out the capital, that give you the monthly.
It should, yes.
Can you do a rough estimate of that then? That's the way they calculate it? Oh, we can see what that 16%, how many months it supports, how many months it carries? Think of, see how much below 3 it is, if it is below 3.
That's where it says.
Trying to make notes here, 3 months.
The LGC wants us to have three months, and they, in the past, that's been like 26% or something for us, I think to actually have the three months, we stayed at 20%.
We haven't been below 3.
Maybe 19.
Okay.
Get down into the month and a half range, I'm afraid, and maybe not though, once you calculate it.
More on that?
I wouldn't, not on this particular thing, can I ask a question, Joe? The stimulus that I'm hearing, you know, we've gotten two or three stimulus, first one was basically used to small businesses. Now, I just spoke to someone at Forsyth County this morning, this last money pot that came in, Forsyth County got 74 million dollars, Forsyth Tech got 15.7 million, because I was on the Zoom conference, talking to their county manager. So, first, do we know how much we're getting in this last pot, this very last pot? And do we know any of the restrictions of how it can be used?
They sent in on a Zoom a while back at the association, and they said they really didn't get any, a child, obviously they told us what the guidance was or anything, and I do know there's a webinar next week, and I had planned on.
There's one on the 15th and one on the 16th, though.
Yeah.
I signed up for the 16th.
I'm getting on lit and seeing if they got any more guidance on how we can spend it, how much it's going to be, how we get it, all that, because.
Y'all get those emails about the webinar?
I've got what the estimate was for us, I've seen the.
What else, leading municipalities and other ones from somebody else?
Well, it's my understanding this pot's going to come directly from the federal government.
It is.
Not going to go through the state. Now, the state is getting a pot, and they're going, their municipalities will get it from that pot, is the way it's been explained to me in a conference I was at.
On the phone, yeah.
That those cities will get their, state will get that pot, and that their funds will come from the state, but the county's funds will come directly from the federal government. And I've still not gotten guidance on how you get, what you have to do to get in there to, for your money to come.
To make that, that goes back to what we were talking about as far as priorities. Just the gentleman spoke last night, we have to do a lot of prioritizing, what's most important and go down from there. But, you know, I know with Forsyth Tech and Vermont, and they were talking about technology, they have the option of technology, Forsyth County doesn't have anymore. We talked about broadband expansion.
Well, I know broadband is one of the things that I've heard several times, you will be able, and infrastructure and economic development, but as far as anything else, I'm not sure. I've seen that on several slides at meetings I've been with the Zoom, broadband's been thrown out, infrastructure's been, and economic development, and then it says, you know, they're not sure about the other, but they're pretty sure about those, and can be done.
Kevin and I have checked previously, recently Amber and I have checked what should be coming in, but now they're estimating somewhere around about 8.8 million for Starks County.
For the county.
As we have seen that list of what was appropriated for this county, it is federal funds, and they're telling us to look at the guidelines, and how to receive these funds are coming out June the 9th, at a presentation that we'll be doing. And hopefully the main thing is to get the guideline, guidelines of how this money can be spent, is it looks like it's going to be like over an eight or 10-year period timeframe that you can use to actually fund the projects that the county speaks fit that need to be done, to help stimulate the economy, and help to handle certain things. I do know that the Wi-Fi, a big portion of that, that's really big in it, and there's other things that can be taken care of, such as, we're hoping that that could be in the budget that we're budgeting now. If so, you guys have got to think about, Julia knows all about this, a planning thing. You guys may want to look and talk about, let's take things out now, because this could be taken care of then.
My understanding is, from what I've heard this morning, is the last part of it can be realized by 2029 or 2030.
Yes, sir. Which is crazy, but, I mean, and you got to think about having someone sit here that's able to sit here and really, really oversee this, these funds and where it's going, who's getting, how y'all want it done? Thinking about that.
I'm sorry, you said this morning, you'd heard that all the way up to 29, 30?
Sure have. In fact, it just came through when I was on the Zoom conference, you know, they've been, everybody's been waiting on the amount of money in the state budget, and they came together this morning during the Zoom conference, they actually came to the Forsyth Tech president and her finance officer, and the Senate and the House had come together, I think it was 25,400 billion more, and they were thinking, Senator Berger and his, and saying they were 24 million, and they put some things in at the last minute, and I think it was 25,400 or something, million, houses and that.
There is a.
I only got it this week.
And throughout the process of the portals of requesting things right now, and Amber and I. right now and Amber and I look at it, it looks like it's asking for personal information, uh, information of persons of mine. This is like a county thing, so we don't understand that. So we're asking questions with the folks and saying, you know, we're going to try to.
And what webinar? Do a webinar?
No, for, uh, requesting to get the fund. It has to be like social security numbers, really personal information.
Webinar, I have wanted your name.
It was like your own portal.
Yeah.
So I don't know, say, well, they would need my subscription.
The local government commission has, has the guidance and the auditors and they've already contacted me that this has to be put in a separate fund. It can't even be put in the same fund I had the other COVID money in. I gotta put it in a separate one. Now, there, I don't know, uh, the school of governments and the LGC is doing a webinar on this. I thought that's the one I was talking about, I think it's the eighteenth. And, uh, I figured I'd send in all that because they're probably going to give us guidance of how we're going to have to count for it and.
That's the one you wanted to do, the LGC, yeah. Cause you said there's one tomorrow, not on the, not June ninth?
July the ninth is when the regulations is coming out.
Oh, my God, I thought you said June.
How it can be spent, where it can be spent and, uh, and when this money is going to be diva-. I can't, I can't even understand how some counties always say that they've got to receive funds.
That don't make sense.
This is a.
I came straight from the.
But I, you know, you're not the only one I've heard this from. So we, we've been calling around, uh, Amber knows, Sarah contacts in Surrey County. She's, uh, calling up there and wanting to know what's going on and go on.
I hope. Now, last time I talked to Chris Knoth, the county manager over at Surrey, he said that he had, they'd gotten about half of theirs already. I don't know. I'll have to ask him how, how he did that.
But I've also heard that counties under, um, like a certain population though, it was coming through the governor's office. That's another thing I've heard, but I hadn't seen anything else about that. That it was coming, yeah, from the governor's office instead of directly from the federal government. If you were under a certain population. So that may be why some counties were getting it.
Forsyth County I know was.
Yeah, it could be based on population.
Lots of them, series is a lot more.
Makes sense.
They came, they came to them right during the Zoom conference. And that come out, that been in the House agreed upon for the final budget. I, I can't remember if it's twenty-five point one. Some of it was slightly over twenty-five billion. And, and last week it was going to be twenty-four.
That's what he said.
So we gained a little million in the last. As they had, uh, their.
Two payments, summer payment and end of the year payment.
I can see the larger ones getting theirs first.
I've no more chance with him to see how they reached out, know theirs.
I've got a question, but I don't know if this is the right time to ask it. Uh, it's, um, it might be during this expenditure part, but have the IT department thought about, do they need any extra money and maybe just could use some of the COVID money for this? To increase their security with all these ransomware threats that we've seen lately? Because I know a school system in, um, Haywood County was hit by that ransomware. And that caused them to be a week and a half late starting school. Cause they would not agree to pay it. They had to rebuild their whole network, um, to get out of that ransomware. And, I mean, I, you know, I got an email this the other day that looked like it was from Andy and it wasn't. You know?
I got one from Jake.
And it's like they're fishing. You know, like, and it's not going to take but just one person to not realize what they're clicking on.
Exactly.
Diane's been working on a lot of stuff that you get to tell.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know why you want these iTunes cards. Everybody to buy you hun- four hundred dollar iTunes cards.
Well, it's. Oh, AC. It's not from Andy.
It's a thing.
You're telling me.
It's not from Andy.
Andrew, what's the email? I did the other day when I got Jake's and so far, okay, but.
Which is kind of weird because I only have a county email, I use the Gmail account.
So, my first question then was, since I went through all the different departments, almost every department, almost every department at our governmental center were asking for computers. Correct? So this money that's coming in, eight point eight million dollars, that we talked about broadband or we talked, could that, I mean, could that not be used for some of this technology as far as computers?
Well, the finance and all the computers.
I saw that.
I, I don't know, see until I get some type of.
You know, he was.
Do not find an explanation on this, right?
Yeah, prior to this budget.
That really.
Oh, that was purposeful.
Yeah, I know.
There's not a computer in the budget that IT has not said needs to be.
Right, I, each one of them said.
I just want, I, I just want to make sure everybody, cause we run all those computers through them and say, do they really, you know?
I saw where y'all put.
Right.
But to answer your concern, concerning, uh, wiring all those viruses and everything, we've been working with Diane when it first actually attacked in Rockingham County, get hit one time.
Thanks, man.
About the hack, so, uh, we got busy with Diane then. Diane reached out to, uh, have data. We are contracted with them to, you know, handle our situation. But we can have.
Saying there's another layer of protection we can add.
She gets kind of weirded out on this because she wants, she says that needs to be careful about what's going on, how to do it and when to do it good.
Well, yeah, you don't want the people that.
The security that she wants to keep is security.
Definitely a security issue.
Look, I think we got pretty good protection support, but then they, yeah, still.
They're always.
She's supposed to be testing employees and sending them emails, trying to get them to open them and all that stuff. And she's done that before, I don't know if she's.
And they have theirs too, where they block them on the email.
Yeah.
Like that, when I got.
She actually jumped on me the other day. So, you know. Looking at one of these Andy emails. They go all the way, I'll just look at it. And then when she comes straight in my office, I'll get my room around, you know? But anyway, yes, yeah, she's doing her job.
Well, I, I figured the people we had were on top of it, but I just know that the ransomware people are getting more advanced in how they hack and stuff. And we just gotta, you know, add layers of protection and, and stuff. Because they're getting more advanced, we've got to.
It's just going to get better.
I'm just saying, it might be something we can spend some of that money on. Cause it's not really in our budget probably, but.
You can, you can.
Pipe line, the pipeline, you had to be.
Yeah.
Watching the, you channel that, that, that cyber terrorism. And, and.
That's all I had on that, sorry. Probably isn't the right time to ask it, but.
We'll have any more on that, we'll just go under line number three that's been just ordered you.
I've got to make it full screen.
Uh, I thought maybe she had a problem. She's getting up to walk around and walk a grand ball.
Please don't.
You need to call her and say. Better.
Hey, you know how to.
Actually, while she's doing that, let's just go ahead and take a five minute break.
I had said it just a long. Far about that.
Every word.
I got to read that thing out of my eyes. It's just a word.
This tea tastes crappy. I can't, I made this hot tea with lemon. It may help my throat, but it sure tastes bad.
You're mad at me?
I toasted it.
I'm not mad. I started.
Feel a little bit bad right now, I've got three rounds of antibiotics in me.
Sonia, why don't you call Mike Rogers and tell him that we're expecting strawberries when I come to. Right, each one of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, strawberries.
He really wants to butter us up. He can do that, right? I've heard the June and July strawberries are the best ones, the sweetest ones.
There's some in the back there.
Yeah. I got some of the.
I'm taking strawberries and then I'd cut his budget anyway.
That would be something, right?
Get the strawberries first.
That's okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, make sure we. I don't worry here.
Oh, no. Later in the month.
Not until, we already eat all the strawberries.
That's right. Nice.
I wonder how, how Surrey's already got their first payment.
I'm just wondering if it's by, um.
Forsyth has got, and Forsyth has got some of theirs.
How much more population have they got than us? Ten thousand?
Well, what Surrey's got, Rockingham has ninety-seven thousand.
And what do we know if they've got any money yet?
I haven't. Call Reese and, uh, Warren.
We need to check with him and.
Oh, no.
Hey, you're on our.
They got any. You would think as soon as there was a way to get the money, they would send guidance out to each county.
You paused it?
Yeah.
Because it was still running, it's everybody.
Yeah, you want to give it, you have to give it out to someone else. And we could just go here, y'all, so we have. We set the mute button.
And mute button, okay.
We want strawberries.
I think you need to go to audio and I go double check and they're kissing me. Yeah, when you really, yeah, when you really turn it back on.
Well, that's what I thought we were about to do, but then. Got you, sure.
Don't, never mess with them, talk about to her, we can't.
Well, no, but, uh, uh, she wanted to make it full screen.
Oh, okay.
That's it, that's it.
Okay.
But, okay.
That's, that's. He told us.
And make sure it's muted now, but yeah.
But I, but I, I don't think he made.
Yeah, well, they, 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 I guess.
Make it see us, but you can't hear us.
Yeah, I can't hear you, they see you walking around. Don't be making no gestures with your hands.
Okay.
Amazing, it's amazing.
Just amazing.
Hey, we got some freshly grabbed. Is that Ronnie's boot top is getting fixed?
You better watch out, it might be unmuted.
I'm trying to think of the works of that, but. I got lozenges and, um, uh, food fed.
You, you got a cute, you got farmers there.
I, I pretty much do. And I'm not a, I'm not a big drug taker actually, but.
Yeah, they can get it again.
Hang on, hang on.
Got some natural stuff, got honey and lemon and a ton of stuff.
Yeah, cause we can't stop it, you can mess up if you cause it, because we can't.
Yeah.
Is there audio?
Yeah, hit the mute button, all right.
Oh, there you go, yeah, yeah.
They'll do that.
We'll call meeting back to order and just go ahead into item three. Spin it over view.
Um, total budget was forty-five million, six forty-eight, six twenty-six, which is an increase. Four million, nine eighty-four, two twenty-eight, or twelve point twenty-six percent over the last twenty, twenty-one. Using three million, nine hundred ninety-five thousand fund balance, which per the audit will take it down to sixteen point twenty-eight percent. Revenues are conservative, salary and equipment, West have been reviewed for needs, not wants. Department's budgets were immune and budgeted or need or prior expenditures. I do have a breakdown of this four million, nine eighty-four, two two eight, if the board would like it. I did put it on the slide, but I do have the breakdown.
I do, we do.
Yeah.
Salary in fridges is two million, oh forty-seven, three twenty-two. I could type this up and give this to y'all. Um. Cardinal foster care was one million, six twenty-seven, eight hundred. DSS is gonna be getting that from Cardinal every month for foster care, uh, to for children that are.
All right, can you back up to the first item you said? The first item.
Salary in fridges is two million, oh forty-seven, three twenty-two.
Okay.
As an increase?
Yes, and that increase consists of positions of five hundred sixty-three thousand, six ninety-one. DSS position that was given during the fiscal year twenty twenty-one of fifty-two, eight sixty-five. Longevity is forty-one thousand, six oh six, and the salary study is one million, three eighty-nine, five sixty. That's what makes up that salary in fridges. That includes fringe too, the five of, all that.
Some of this is positions and some of it's the increase based on the salary study.
Salary study is one, three eighty-nine, what?
One, three eighty-nine, five sixty.
Is that total amount recurring, all of it recurring, right?
Yeah.
And the total amount was two, what?
Two million, oh forty-seven, three twenty-two.
Okay, um, so this, this is all, all what you're giving us is encumbered in this four million, nine hundred eighty.
Yeah, makes up the four million, nine eighty-four, two twenty-eight.
So the cardinal money you're talking about, they gave us additional money.
We'll get money every month for that. It's coming in and I'm showing it as revenue, but you have to show it as expenditure.
As well. Okay.
So that increased the budget.
Much was it?
One million, six twenty-seven, eight hundred.
Oh, really? That's a wash, kind of.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it makes your budget go up.
Even though they're giving us the money.
Even though you got revenue to offset it. Foster.
That's in addition to the two, two million forty-seven per, that personnel stuff. What else? What else after that?
Foster care went, uh, IVE foster care went up four hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine seventy-three. Those are state figures. So, you know, that's, it's DSS.
Is it all outside money?
Excuse me?
It's all outside money, not any.
Some of it's federal, state and county.
Oh, it is the normal split?
Yeah, the split, spending for the.
Okay.
Uh, equipment went down four hundred and thirty thousand, five eleven. That's a credit. We didn't budget as much equipment as we did last year. Uh, natural resources is getting the grants of a hundred and eighteen thousand, three sixty-seven to, uh, do restoration on some of these creeks banks. They're getting two grants, so that's, and then, uh, then a normal two percent increase for departments. This is one million, one thirty-eight, two seventy-seven. We usually say, you know, a department's going up about two percent.
What's that two percent now? That's, uh, what? Two percent what?
That's just two percent of.
Two percent salary increase?
Well, but just overall people's.
Department budget.
Department's budgets are going up. Not all of them went up two percent, other than the salary study, but some would.
Let's go ahead.
That's just an average two percent increase for department's budgets.
And that was, what was the amount?
One million, one thirty-eight, two seventy-seven.
Okay, um, and the grant money you talked about with the creeks, that's, we have to show that as expenditure, but we're also gonna get that back.
Even, I had to show it as expenditure, but I had to show the revenue coming in.
Gotcha.
Does the salary study, didn't it include an automatic two percent increase per year?
Excuse me?
The salary study didn't include an automatic two percent increase per year? Yes, and that's part of that.
Yeah, the longevity is forty-one thousand, two oh six. That what you're asking?
We approved that amount for the salary study and then, but then in addition, if I remember right, the salary study said you increase all of them two percent per year, every job, right?
Yeah. That, that the longevity's gonna cost forty-one thousand, two oh six.
Okay, is it part of those first?
It's part of that two million, oh forty-seven.
Part of that?
Yes.
Okay. That's included in it, yeah.
Like I said, I, I should have typed this up and handed it out, sorry. I'll get it. If you don't want another sheet of paper.
Anyway, you can get to us by Thursday, the meeting.
Yeah, I can get to you Thursday.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I just had figured this and, and I just made a note on my sheet to tell you, you know, just so everybody would know. I kind of figured it out. Sometimes I can't, but I tried to. I did my best.
One more time, what was the one million, one thirty-eight, two seventy-seven?
That's two percent increase over all budgets, department budgets.
Let me ask another question real quick. So the budget that's presented to us is, like you said, it's already taken all the department's budgets and you've already sort of cut them already. And so is there something in here that tells us how much has already been cut from their budgets? Okay, I'm just curious.
I mean, I could.
Gotcha. No, that's fine.
Your original, anyway, these sheets, you have the original request.
See, I have the original request on each sheet.
Yes, in the message.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go back and look at that.
Well, on your, on each budget sheet for each department, it shows requested and then it shows what we.
Oh, okay.
That sheet right there, yeah.
Okay.
Is that part, is that part of the message or just handed out separately? That's part of the message.
That's Jake's stuff.
Okay, then I have it.
That's kind of give you a summary.
Okay, I'll go back and look at that.
Across, oops, jumping. Anybody have any more questions? Uh, across the board, department longevity, salary study increase, uh, retirements increasing. Medical insurance stayed the same, dental stayed the same, unemployment went up some, uh, term life went up. And the new positions I would like for them to be effective July the tenth, or any reorganizations, July the tenth, if any are approved. At the beginning of the pay period, we wouldn't have to prorate. Then fuel is based on twenty twenty-one expenditures. Across the board reductions were made. And requests were based on actual use, and all computers are approved by IT. In your first, and then either budget. Salary study. Most of the budget's gonna increase because of salary study, but they separated advertising between governing body and administration. Animal control, that decreased in one thousand, three eighty-seven. Animal control is currently under the sheriff, but maintains a separate budget. Sheriff has requested that the enforcement be put in the sheriff's office budget. The operations of animal control will be in the animal control budget. So he's requesting to transfer the deputy sheriff, animal control officer to sheriff's office budget. Eliminating animal shelter attendant, reducing part-time salaries. This is a reorganization, a restructuring of the department that the sheriff has talked to us about, and we put in the budget. Um. Then they want five toolboxes for the trucks, and that can come from capital reserve. They have some funds over there. Requested, they requested seventy thousand for floor repair per the state inspection and eighteen for electrical panel. And we have put that in a recommendation in the capital project of sheet when we get to it, for the board to consider. Okay, have any questions?
Um, back to the earlier sheet on the gas, uh, estimate you said, y'all estimated based on this year. Uh, is there any thought about the Biden gas prices versus the Trump gas prices?
I kind of.
You know which one's gonna be higher?
I kind of.
Didn't see that.
I mean.
A lot of them I didn't. Most of, all those supplies I didn't change.
Okay.
Because I've looked at what, I think most departments are gonna get through. I've had the buzzing limit, you'll get on the fourteenth, some on may get a little bit, but, um.
Missed up a dollar or something, I think, since he got in.
A lot of departments are not even gonna use what they got this year, so, I mean, it's just, some of the, most of the ones I'm having put money is the departments like EMS. Planning because they're out doing their jobs and.
So you didn't use us a particular gas price then? You just used it based on what you got them last year?
Because using the cards, the WebEx cards we're using now instead of the gas tank.
Mm-hmm.
We still, we get a discount on those off our bills, so, um, that helps with some of the prices we're having to pay, so.
On animal control, is the sheriff now not gonna operate the, the, uh, operations of the animal shelter? He's just gonna do enforcement?
That's correct.
Who's, who's gonna operate the shelter?
He's not gonna operate the shelter.
Operate the shelter, yes, if you will have a department head running it now, and it'll come back under the control.
Who's got a new department head?
Well, the one that's always.
Scott's already his supervisor.
Who's he working for? I mean, who's he gonna work for? Sheriff or?
He'd be under the county manager if you'd have to work for the county. Just like it was before, before he turned on the sheriff.
Okay.
This is a request from sheriff's.
I think it's a smart request, personally.
But he's still gonna maintain enforcement of it. And it's, it's, you know, we do it this way, it's, it's saving more money.
Yep, you did.
None of the employees in the building work for the sheriff anymore then?
Uh, they gonna get transferred all the way to being two of them?
There's one now and he's asking for an additional one.
Yes, too, so, uh, you'll see an increase, you'll see an increase in the sheriff's budget of an additional employee, and that's where it's coming from. This, for this area, and then you'll see a, uh, you'll see a decrease in an employee here in animal control.
Doing this.
You may be looking at about forty thousand dollars savings.
Doing this, I thought I put it on the sheet, but apparently I didn't. I'm gonna put it on the sheriff's sheet, uh. Reducing this and add a new, if the sheriff slash animal control officer, and he's asked for a position be transferred from the jail to his back, his budget. A five thousand, five hundred sixty-four, ninety-three cents increase.
The base for my question is making sure animal control is staffed.
Yeah. There'll still be three.
That shelter and all that.
People over there, animal control officers.
That work for who?
That'll be under the county manager.
Okay. Just three.
And then the deputy is gonna be under the sheriff, the two deputies will be under the sheriff.
They'll still, are they still full-time animal control enforcement?
That's what, that's what.
That's what he's thinking.
Been recommended, yes, sir.
Yeah, that, it takes at least three to run that place for sure.
Little wobble finger doll.
Just working out what.
Arts council, theirs is, theirs is just salary, that's all we pay for our account. Contingency, we took it to I reduce, uh, we reduce the emergency contingency, twenty-five thousand dollars. Usually for my corner review, I most time get some more contingency if we need it, so. Apartment extension, um, everybody's decreased, um, but all their positions are filled now. They are asking for a carport for equipment that they got, um, for a grant. They want a carport to park them under because right now it's just out in the weather. It wasn't that piece of equipment in. They just want it to. That service decreased five hundred sixteen. The summary is on the next slide of all their debt. All the purchases, um, three hundred fifteen thousand was paid off, and a new installment purchase of two forty-fives for three years. Enterprise leasing was moved to all the departments, uh, per the alter. So it's not under debt service anymore. There's a lease payment under each department that has a vehicle through enterprise. And then the one at Cove, EMS slash station slash maintenance bill and finance in a ten years, a hundred forty-six thousand, four fifty annually.
Enterprise thing, was that in governing bodies? What was that under? Governing bodies, the enterprise?
It's under any fun, any department that has.
I know now, but what was it?
It was under debt service.
Oh, it was under debt service, okay. I was thinking gov, well, governing bodies went down a lot, what was?
Yeah. Um.
Was that a different reason? Okay.
That's a different reason. Um, this list is all your payments for next year, and then we owe, and then one, our total principal and interest payments on our all debt that we have. We owe, we got five million, oh eight one, four seventy-three, and we owe forty-four million, one hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred ninety. Two of those are USDA loans. You can see the years that we have left on all the debt, of some of that school debt, fixing up, it's dwindling on down all the. District resource officer, we're using, uh, DRC fees to pay for the weed, ear blowers and computers. Economic development. Elections, they got a missed on elections this year. His figure will change with his request, and it will increase eight thousand dollars more, but.
When is that big increase for DRC? Is there?
Excuse me?
Did they purchase some equipment with the DRC, district resource?
Well, see, the salaries.
Is it all salary primarily?
Yeah.
I mean, they got working over there.
Free, but twenty-five percent of, of the clerical staff is paid out of EMS because she does some work.
Okay.
You know. Communications increased, uh, salaries, um, they won, black box switches for, and we're paying for that from capital reserve. That was the black. Oh, that keeps them from having, it lets them use all four of the screens instead of having to go from one screen to another. I don't think what that did. Um, they were reorganizing the staff. He's asked for lead telecommunications supervisor on a twelve-hour shift, which would put all of their, his supervisors on twelve-hour shifts, which would reduce the overtime. And he would reduce his part-time with the extra, um, communications. Of a telecommunications to work and not, instead of part-time. That and the lead, you, you, the estimated cost would be thirty-two thousand, oh thirty-six for all this changing. Reducing his part-time and reducing all his shift supervisors to a twelve-hour shift instead of twenty-four point two-five shift, because it would cut the overtime.
The actual part-time, over, the overtime rate of time that you've done away with this, and you gave them that first, it pretty much was gonna wash down.
Well, see, they'll know the different hour to sixteen every pay period. That's all that they could, that's all they could get if they didn't take time off, those weeks that they get from pay time. Emergency management, um, is decreased due to, they, he had a grant in there last year, five trucks, he was asking for radios. EMS increased five hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. We're at the six new paramedics for unit six at Monet Cove. We've already bought the ambulance, we're just waiting for the station, and we didn't hire the staff, the staff that ambulance that takes six. And purchasing an ambulance, financing radios for the nine, unit nine and training office vehicle. Jaws and life for financing, computers, uh, the portable radios for EMS units, IV pump for unit six. Washer and dryer for the penthouse station, using part-time staffing for the quick response vehicle in Francisco area. That's due to the call time, getting an ambulance to the Francisco area. I think they worked out something with the Francisco fire department, uh, a vehicle there.
Make sure that we can cut down on the time that it takes for someone to get that, to have more issues of that. We can utilize, uh. This truck there, along with part-time work. Those two, those houses at the fire department, so it should be. Individuals that live in that area has got adequate services. Someone can show them, I tell them, lots of people, lots of workers, uh, units gets there.
And do we know when the Monet Cove station is gonna be ready now?
I think it's, it's, it's like waiting to get.
I'm not been keeping up with it, sorry.
Is that unit nine that's gonna be there? Unit nine, we're getting truck radios, is that?
Maybe, I don't know what unit nine.
Oh, what unit?
That's just what he.
You heard of them?
They must be new in there, you're right.
Unit six should be.
Yeah.
You truck.
If unit nine, the community paramedic.
It could be, oh, okay.
Well, then just up there asking for.
They have a community paramedic.
Pay for any of this?
There's some issues with the radios that they got.
The last time was it?
I love to find out. I wish I had something that told me exactly where the money could be, uh, utilized there.
I know there was some stuff in the last time, was it, would use for?
Yeah. Much as far as the COVID care acts. I don't see why this one would not be the same. Medical, you know, some EMS service, services stuff that, uh, equipment that was purchased under the, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Here's a. I don't see why this could not, this wouldn't do the same.
Point, I'd like us to take a closer look at how these paramedics are paid versus how they used to be paid and how much it's increased the county's budget, the way we pay them now.
We used to pay them half-time, which is allowed by fair labor standards. Of course, they call that Chinese math, but it was from the book. And now we pay them true time and a half. it was from the book and now we pay them true time and a half. Whatever they work over forty hours is paid at time and a half.
It just caused some of those salaries to be nearly a hundred thousand dollars a year, which is more than the director makes. I mean.
He does work overtime too, you know.
Well. And just, to me, he seems off about it. I mean.
It is, it has.
Well, it was what was approved, but there's no reason this board can't go back and look at it.
That's true.
And compare it and say, really, can we afford to do that? I mean, that's great money and I know they deserve to be paid well, but.
It'd be interesting to see if that's across the board there getting that or if it's a few individuals getting all the overtime also.
I'm saying.
Got what you were thinking too?
Mm-hmm, one of the things I'm thinking.
Says about the radios a little bit. I guess, that's something.
Oh, there's something, uh, there's an upgrade to the radios that has to be done for the, of that viper in it. But that's how they explained it to us, the sheriff's office and EMS and fire.
I wish I was in radio business, I really.
I know.
Because I found that out yesterday. And they told me it's fireball, if I replace ten radios, it'd cost me fifty-eight thousand dollars.
That's what you're doing, that's ridiculous.
And it ain't been that long, well, we bought these radios.
Right.
But once they flip over. Well, I said, you're gonna have to make the, you're gonna have to make the change.
And now they know we're gonna have to upgrade them.
Upgrade, you're gonna have to replace them, do you?
Well, we don't know yet, that's what we're trying to figure out, we'll upgrade or we'll replace them.
See, we proposed upgrading in the budget.
Well, that's, well, that's what all that do to mine too.
Well, those kind of radios are expensive, they're expensive in the military and they have the same issues in the military. They cost a gazillion dollars and you, you will not find them that don't cost that much.
They anywhere five, six thousand dollar piece.
Yeah.
But I just, this was the first department that's had it in it that made me, because we were cutting that out and then sheriff or one of them said, they can't, that's for an upgrade and I'm like, uh-oh, we gotta go back to those we cut out.
Just start to tell them, oh, that you're gonna have to make the change.
Well, see, I found it out Friday when I ordered a new battery for mine. The girl says, well, have you thought about place these radios, are they gonna be upgraded? I'm like, what are you talking about? The radios ain't that old, oh, they're gonna have to be upgraded, okay? Now they make them what they call a mild explosive battery. These radios are gonna have to be upgraded.
Put their name on that one?
Yeah. I guess somewhere one house fire, some battery blown up, one firefighter. Well, you gotta have them.
No questions on the MS? I'd have to do some figuring on that, on that.
Well, maybe before the next budget work session, we can.
I do know, I looked at taking up the twelve hours. It was two million some dollars to do that, because you had to hire all. You had to hire as many people as you have now, you had to hire as many. And I knew, I did, Jake asked me to figure it and I figured it and I'm like, mm, it ain't on.
You have to compete with other counties what they're doing though.
Yeah, well, some counties are, do do the twelve hours and some still do the twenty fours.
Okay.
It just, it lessens your overtime because they're a hundred sixty-eight hours instead of two hundred eighteen point two-five and on the third pay period, it's two forty, two fifty and that does just make it sixteen hours every pay period, but every other week, so.
Yeah, we do the twenty-four forty-eight, the sheriff does three, uh, one, twenty-four sixty-two.
Yeah.
But it is our four fifty, do that.
But I did, Jake asked me to figure it, so I figured it.
Sorry.
Y'all know I have figured it. Environmental health.
Need to measure turnover with this new salary increase.
Yeah, I doubt you have as much, but.
Environmental health, laptop and computer for them, all, they're the salaries. My is, decrease, my decrease was due to, I had server in my last year of my budget, I don't this year. But I was paying for my budget with the interest, but I'm not now, but. And then I had to increase my bond to a compliance uh with the USDA loan that I was not aware of and auditors had brought it to my attention, my bond has gone way up. Also how much, and I gotta keep that bond, finance officer bond has to be that much until pay off the USDA loan.
How much is it? Never mind if you don't know. Does everybody else have to have it, does Lisa have to have it? You don't have to have it?
No, it's just finance director has, is required.
Okay.
One thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, it was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And like I said, the auditors brought it to my attention, USDA hadn't said anything about it and I didn't even know, I mean, I didn't read all that document and stuff and.
You got a long way, it was told you should have got it. I know.
So, you know, and then we're asking the board to do DocuSign contract for signing documents electronically. And we've got a price of five thousand some dollars for this. And what this would do, we could send documents to a system called DocuSign and people could sign it instead of sending a piece of paper around and hoping it don't get lost or anything. Like, for example, a personal action form, it could be sent from HR to the department for the department had to sign off on it through this DocuSign and then it would be sent to Jay for his signature and then it would go back to Gail, his sign, instead of skipping the piece of paper around. And we could do contracts, um, and all, and I forgot what the other documents was, we was thinking about it. We could do it per document, so we've done a minimum of one thousand five hundred documents. And so, you know, we're just asking the board if we can do this, it's just a new technology and trying to lessen the skipping the papers around. And two, this will be kept, the document will be kept on a cloud, so it'll be out there if anybody ever needed it or wanted to look at it or something. But this is just something we're asking the board if we can.
Is it a one-time cost of five thousand?
No, it's every year.
Five thousand per year? Kind of limitation on how many documents or not?
One thousand five, no, but if you, we try to do the lesser documents because if you don't use all your documents, you lose it. So, but you can buy extra documents if you needed to, but we tried to do the least amount that we could do that we thought we would do and I was thinking HR sends a whole lot of documents on it.
A lot more than what you just said, I would think.
And you think longevity, that's three hundred, over, almost four hundred, well, uh, almost four hundred people right there, a sheet of paper and then you count new hires, terminated, retired forms, uh, somebody changed a position, you know, they could do, they gonna have a lot of documents. And right now, I won't pay for it out of my budget, but next year, once we see how many documents everybody uses, we'll probably split it out per the budget, but I didn't know how many we would possibly have, so.
Is it interim only or external documents?
We probably do external documents too. I'm hoping we can send the contracts to Ty like that, instead of him having to send a letter, he can just sign off, you know. They would, the ones that don't have a Ty, uh, attorney thing, see, they, I had to sign it for pre audit. Jake has to sign it, Ty has to approve off on the contract. So you're talking about three people right there and that's not counting. You know, lots of times I get a contract, I'm not got the company signed off on it yet either. And I use, I, DocuSign, the reason I went with them is the state uses them, uh, the JCPC forms comes through DocuSign for me to sign off on, the, and the uh, emergency management documents comes through that for Jake and I to sign off on and so that's reason, I, we looked at that company, so that's something that we're requesting.
Okay.
Just to help with the flow. Fire marshal, uh, he's asking for strong air pack, gas detector, computer and radio, that's radio upgrade. Bike tech, uh, they're asking for a trailer to haul the mower to, um, Almond Square, they move Almond Square. They're asking for a trailer to be able to haul the mower to go do that. EIS, increased salaries. Government body, it increased one million forty thousand O C T A, this was due to, well, for the increased meeting rate for the board of county commissioners, Jake has.
Then what just included the commissioners, implicit, that was it.
We moved retirees insurance, property and liability insurance, work comp insurance, health re- reimbursement account to the insurance department budget, instead of having it under government bodies, since I had to set that up, I said, well, we need to move that, all that other stuff out of, if we're gonna have an insurance department, why not pay all the insurances out of that department? And it advertised a split between A and M for board meetings and contracts. That's, that's for Shannon's contract. Goes over into the next fiscal year.
What is the, um, new department, you said, insurance department?
Yeah, it's where I'm putting that insurance claim, medical claims now, you know, the auditors made me put that in a.
Oh, okay, it's still under you though?
Yeah.
Not, not an apartment per se?
It's called insurance department.
A lot of them.
But yeah, that reduced the government bodies because that insurance is not in there, because that's a lot of money. Uh, health department, health title nineteen Medicare fund. That increased, um, county funding, the five hundred ninety-one thousand five sixty-six for the, uh, title nineteen Medicare fund. Transfer from general fund, uh, they're asking for two laptops and then I showed exactly the health department, environmental health, health title nineteen, that totaled one million oh eighty-five oh thirteen, which was a forty thousand oh twenty-six increase for all of those departments, that's all that's under health director. I just show, I just usually show all the departments that are under health. And ask for any, in fact, she, uh, funding some positions she funded last year. Human resources are asking for two fireproof file cabinets and a laptop, computer. And this is the insurance account. Moved it from government body to property, work comp, retirees, health and health reimbursement account. Jail, jail budget increased nine thousand three ninety, they get the laptop and capital reserve projector and radios, that's upgrade for the radio. Sheriff requested that the corporal slash evidence manager be moved from the jail budget to the sheriff's office budget. It's just transferring from one budget to the other. And I'm showing the revenues, three hundred thousand, which is conservative and it's paying for the debt, some operation. Legal, his retainer increases, which y'all already approved the contract. Libraries, uh, they increased fifteen thousand, this is the third and final year of their implementation of their salary study and their insurance increased. We operate, we, this is for three libraries, Danbury, Monique Cove, and Key. Medical examiners, which is, I had to increase this, I keep getting bills, so. We're, we have to have people pronounce people dead if they find them at their home, that's two hundred dollars and then we have to do and pay for an autopsy, it's one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I've had a large increase this year and I take it it's because of COVID. I put it off on that, I don't know what else. Can't explain why we had such an increase, but we've had a large increase.
The county has to pay for the autopsy, the county has to pay for it.
If, if the family requests autopsy, they have to pay for it, but if they do an autopsy because of just, I guess, questioning, we have to pay for it. The state sets that rate of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, you should not think that much. And this does most of all.
I can give you a prime example. My brother died of a heart attack last August, he had no primary care. So just the king came over. Watermelon, one autopsy on him that he did not have.
Yep.
That's probably where you say that increase from, stuff like it.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, MO, that's contract. M L E funds, that's where, um, we're putting the three hundred ninety-eight thousand eight twenty, that's not changed. Reason of the increase, she changed, y'all have already approved this budget, that three thousand dollars is the ABC tax that we get and that we have to pay, A A B.
I have a question. Um, the, the medical examiner, we, we don't, we don't have one in the county anymore, don't we? We contract with.
Well, our E is, a paramedic can do it now. Nurse, nurse can do it.
Justin did, my brother.
Has to be trained though, of course, they have to be trained.
Yeah, they have to go to training for it.
Okay.
And, and two, in that medical examiner's scheme, we budgeted two thousand dollars uh from the state for body bags and we buy the body bags from that fund, that department. But it's off, that two thousand dollars offset by revenue, they give us ninety dollars a day.
Okay.
Why you talk about? That's one of those subjects you don't get.
Oh, sorry.
Natural resources increase and their professional services is due to those, like I said, those grants that are hundred percent reimbursed for the, uh, restoration of the streams and the laptop and they want a new desk. They've got old furniture down there. Parks, uh, increasing our guard rail at more top parks and increasing the operating expenses for the four parks, other parks that are under the county, two thousand and four thousand.
At that park.
Yeah, so I'm here.
And those four parks, it's Monique Cove, Mines Park, Penile Mines Park, East Stokes, um, Park and Germantown Park. Those were done through par grants and they had to be under the county, they're on our insurance and the property is owned by the county.
That's you guys. Talk about Danbury, or talk for. I'm surprised somebody had that.
I'm surprised somebody got her Sunday, the guy was a jet ski.
Jet ski?
No, it was a motorboat. It was like a motorboat come through there.
Yeah, he was, I got a picture of him, probably he was on jet ski.
That ain't no jet ski.
He is, dude, that looks good.
Motorboat.
I'm gonna play.
Yeah.
It's a re, and that, that part of that whole thing, they would have the baptism out there.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
Who posted that? Who had it posted, I can't remember.
I can't even remember who.
Cause they were saying, let's make us cafe, oh, I know, it was, it was Yvonne Rutledge's son, Adam.
I'll put Moretop Park on the discussion agenda for the June fourteenth meeting, revisit that then.
Planning their budget increase salaries. They don't remember. He needs real conservative. Public buildings increased nine hundred thirty one thousand eight hundred eighty six. They're asking to reorganize their staffing, adding a custodian supervisor position. Move the custodian into the maintenance tech slash park position. Move an animal control attendant to the custodian position. And the maintenance slash park position now would go maintenance slash sewer fund, which means half that salary would come from the regional sewer fund. Board has asked for that to help with, he's going to have this person certified and help with the overlooking of the sewer system. And this move in the positions would be twelve thousand eight hundred eighty four dollars, which would make these changes cost thirty eight thousand two sixty eight. And the computer, air compressor, vacuums. And the trace S C with a building automatic system for the jail D S S building, government center, or financing those. Those would reduce your utility cost on these buildings if we put that on there. We're dedicated to that all that.
Again, think about it, I don't know if this, this money is coming in federal government, can you take care of that?
I have a question, if we keep it in the budget, then you can't use that money for it, right?
I understand.
But if we cut it from the budget, we could fund it that way, if we can find out.
The following question that would be, can you do a budget amendment later, cut it without that being an ethical?
Right.
Well, it would be a yes or no answer when you ask them. I don't know if we can ask that question ahead of time. Cut out, didn't work out, then you can look at it next year.
Yeah, we can always do that.
Also, continuing with public building, we are paying from capital reserve, probationary, Danbury Library Room, hospital foundation, hospital ceiling of the wall, flooring, government center election office, and generator at the Pine Hall Clinic. And that's to keep their medicines, if the power goes off, make sure their medicines don't get. And demolition dealing on the prison camp property of one hundred forty thousand dollars. That's all coming from the capital reserve fund. That's how that, all those projects are being funded. Purchasing, sheriff was paying purchasing project manager a stipend in fiscal year twenty twenty one for overseeing the vehicle maintenance. Purchasing project position has been budgeted seventy five percent purchasing, twenty five percent vehicle maintenance. Budget rule presented in the twenty twenty one fiscal year budget, and this is how the vehicle maintenance has been operated. By the personal hand, you can't get the site. Recreation, they put recreation, they, why, Y M C A contractor made the same. Richard Dees, his increased forty four thousand five fifty one. He's asking for a deputy, Richard Dees position. The receptionist with a phone for the county, and will be doing passport procedures, which would create a revenue. And it's eliminating his part-time, permanent part-time position, deputy Richard Dees. This change in staffing would cost twenty four thousand three sixty.
It's going to three, we have count Brandon's phone. Right now, he's three plus.
Four full-time permanent.
Yes, right now, he's three point five, three, three, three.
They bring all the revenues of.
But he's going to do passports, which will bring in, this person will do passport stuff, which will bring in additional revenue.
Do you have any idea, I'll get this on.
Is the change in staff cost twenty four three sixty, is that reflected in that forty four thousand number, or?
Yeah, but that also, yeah.
Forty four includes that twenty, okay.
Do you have any idea or indication of how much that would possibly bring in, do they have any idea how many people get passports here in the county?
He's got us, he's got us, thinking he's doing estimates based on other counties, and then the population of what certain counties got first on them, so he's got a mathematical equation of what he think it's going to be. But to give you a good number, he's got to have it here. So he thinks that it should offset the additional cost, or at least a large portion of additional cost into the employee. And then the county benefits by having someone doing receptions. And it's not moving around in other departments.
Says bringing in about fifteen thousand dollars per year on average. As a passport service.
Have to wait and see what it does one year, but he's estimating now what other counties have.
So you want to try it with this part-time position, just for a year to see how it turns out, or do you absolutely have to have a full-time position?
I'd have to talk to Mr. about that. But you know, reading how the receptionist here in a long time. This is one way, Brandon and I were talking, and here's a, here's a, work out if you want to go that route. And if you don't, then Brandon would have to let you know, he can handle the. Where's he behind here? Passports, I'm sorry, the passports with the existing.
My question is, are you adding a whole position, or you're basically adding a half of position?
Really, you're adding a half position because you're eliminating the permanent part-time position.
That's what I thought.
Where's the reception person's, being his office? Restrictive not to come in, and doesn't like to be able to have all calls. Now, it's a switchboard.
It's a switchboard, yes. And we've, we've not had a good one. There are a lot of people, you know, they, if someone that was able to help people, I think it would be a big help to the public because they don't, they're not down to have to go in here and listen to the city, isn't it? They had someone to direct them like it used to be, I think it'd be a big help. But here's, here's, here's an opportunity to get something, basically, to go that route, that's something you got. But, let's talk to Mr. about the passports.
Is it a switchboard now, the ones upstairs are doing it still?
Yeah, planning's doing it, public building's doing it, and it used to be some that would come down here to, to Amper's position. She's, she's taking a lot of calls. They quit. Richard Dees doing it all. It's still an additional purpose that's added to that.
Evaluation, their, their decrease due to, you know, this is, they're not, I thought this was the big year for them. And they get two computers. School current expense. School current expense tax rate's going to remain thirty one cents. Of the budget recommendation, twenty twenty one is fourteen thousand eight oh one three seventy seven, which is an increase of one thousand seven eighty four four seven thirteen point seventy seven percent. Eighty nine thousand two hundred dollars is from the four cent new school, new schools slash by tech fund. Thirteen, man, thirteen, ninety five, eight, eight four, thirty one, is thirty one percent of the tax rate. And penalties and interest, fund balance of eight hundred sixteen thousand three thirteen, the fund balance. School current expense fund, not general fund. I have, morning I looked to see what their fund balance would possibly be again, end of the year in this fund, and I'm saying it's going to be about eight hundred fifteen thousand seven eighty five. So we're using eight sixteen.
Are you trying to make sixteen out of the general fund balance? Or what fund balance?
Excuse me, their fund balance will be nine hundred fifteen thousand seven eighty five, I'm sorry.
It's, it's the schools.
I know what I did, I was changing the figures back and forth this morning, I'm figuring.
That's something that y'all, you always talked about, you thought that that was something.
And this is fund and the current expense fund balance, and, um, so, also, if you.
This fund balance from the model? I don't understand this fund balance, this eight sixteen.
That's the fund balance just for the school current expense fund. We put the school current expense fund, thirty one cent tax rate into a separate fund.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This is the fund balance of that fund.
Okay, I know what you're talking about now. Last year, was it three hundred thousand we gave them?
Yeah, wasn't much, and I emailed Lynette, but she hasn't gotten back to me what their fund balance designated was for the fund, for the, for her. They're all that last year.
I thought we kind of cleaned that out last year, we didn't think there'd be that much in it.
This is the one up here, this is not theirs down there.
I'm not saying the one up here, hadn't it, hadn't it built up for two or three years last year, and we gave them money out of it, which fund balance was that?
That was capital outlay.
Okay, okay.
This is whole separate, you know, we've separated the tax rate between general fund and school. I put that in a separate fund, so it has its own fund balance up here, not down at the school board.
Okay.
So now we have a fund balance up here for current expense, and they have a fund balance for current expense. But we have to appropriate the fund balance up here.
Okay.
And under the yellow tab is the school budget, and if you go to the one, two, fourth page of that. It is, they have, Lynette, it has been detailed what their increase of one million three twenty six two oh six is.
On capital outlay or current expense?
On capital or current?
Current. Okay.
Oh, gee, how much did we give them last?
How much did we give them last year in capital?
Million seven hundred. One minute about one seven fifty or something. No, one million five twenty four. The year before was a million seven.
The year before was a million seven.
Yeah, and that's all on that sheet I give you.
Question to.
But if you want to see what that.
Go last year. Total four seven, eight, eighty is total of the fund balance and increase in taxes. It's strictly due to the revaluation. They told me thirty one.
Now that, if you approve their budget the way it's been presented, that's going to use about all that fund balance that's in that current expense here. Extra, you won't have that. Current expense recommended two million one twenty two six hundred, sales tax. I think a one million nine forty, and then the rest of it's coming from fund out of one hundred eighty two thousand six hundred.
Where's that sheet in this book? Oh, we're back there now, okay, oh, we're back to the yellow, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right.
Back to the other.
Okay, all right, I'll follow you. Okay, go ahead.
And, you know, these funds are restricted to be paid for capital outlay or debt service, a general statute. And I had estimated the fund balance to be nine hundred sixty nine thousand two forty two, this fund. I'm only using one hundred eighty two, and they had asked for these estimates from me, so what they sent up here is, I mean, they knew what we possibly had in this fund because Lynette had asked me, so I guess they chose not to. She had emailed me and asked me, well, that's helped all that, and then she said, do you know how much we might have at the end of the year? And I'd done an estimate for her, so, and they was working on their budget, so they had the figures, but they didn't ask for two million one twenty two six hundred.
Are all the funds going to them in capital, funds that belong to them anyway, they get them? We couldn't do anything else with them, right?
Only thing you can do is debt service. And capital is all you can buy statute.
It had for the schools.
Yeah.
Has to be.
For the schools.
It has to be for the schools, all this money does. We couldn't take it, buy it, do anything in the capital. Other than, so it has to be either for school debt or school capital, right?
Correct. Because if you remember, we used to pay the G O debt that we had on West Oaks and Pine Grove out, I bet, because that's what was proposed.
None of that debt's.
That's gone, that's been paid off, so, and none of the new debt was, it was said we would use sales tax dollars for. I guess the board could choose to do it if they wanted to.
Is it covered by sales tax dollar, all of it? All the new debt?
New debt's covered by the four cent fund, that's right, that's why we, the new debt is covered by the four cent fund. That's why we don't use sales tax.
Oh, okay.
But if you put new debt on, you could use some of this for it.
Yeah, the other, the other debt's already designated for that.
Yes, out of the four cent fund, that's in the model.
Yeah, so we have to use that, okay. But if we did new debt, we could go back to doing what we did before.
I got too many funds. And they give, also, just so you know, school system, when they sent me the. school system, when they sent me the, uh, capital request, I had to cipher some of this because of the coding they used. They also sent a roof list, but they didn't ask for, I think, one roof to be done. But they had other roofs on here.
But ten of them.
Yeah. It's in behind the capital. I put a green sheet between it just to let y'all know. But I couldn't figure out, but I think that, but one of the roofs is on here, and I don't remember which one it was. Oh, it's the North Stokes Auto Tech building. The only one I could find that was on this that they were passing for. But they sent y'all another list showing other roof issues.
This is the study they do.
Just so y'all know that.
You think this is not any architectural one?
For five years.
We talked about that period.
Yes.
We need to go wait and start looking at our scopes.
We have, and they could use, you know, this capital money for the roof stuff. And, you know, do we know how much money this school system is getting out of this fund? We're getting supposedly eight point eight million.
Supposed to be about nine point two million.
Nine point two million. Of course, they'll have restrictions for that. Who are God to have to have to use it? Just like us, we don't know what we can use ours, but. Of course, banks, I am, it doesn't know what. I was.
I'll see if I can answer questions on the agenda. I can call it Raleigh. Obviously, we can just, some kind of answers on this.
We, we as a county don't know what we can use our eight point eight million for. School system doesn't know you have one thing you can use ours for. We're here, we're sitting on seventeen what's that million dollars gathered, county and schools. We don't know any. You might call and see if you can find out a little something.
Only I've been told was something about the deal plan on replacing some glass or windows or something in the school. Y'all heard about this? That they can be able to get covered under that money?
And doors?
Yeah, and doors and stuff, so I don't know what the actual figure was and which school it's going into, but.
These was like, especially doors that was through the security side of things. I think the sheriff's talked about that. Or now, they're saying, hey, real paper is.
Right.
Last question on current expense. What is there, what restrictions are there on like that eight sixteen three thirteen we spent? For fund balance?
There's none.
That could be used for other things. Anything, stuff too?
If the board decides they want to take it out of it, yes. Oh, that's part of thirty-one cents.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, it's not a school tax. We're just saying thirty-one cents is paying for schools.
Yeah, you just allocate it that way, but before it was all combined.
Yeah, it's not said that it's a school tax.
Yeah. But eight sixteen can be used for other things.
Yeah, I mean, you can transfer money to general fund out of them.
I was kind of wondering what the thought process was on fully funding the schools' current expense especially. Uh, you know, they, I'm sure they got valid requirements, but then at the same time, there's affordability question. You afford to do that, so that's to be discussed further.
One question, the schools. Uh, senior services, they use the Aspore computer from Wannecote Senior Center for IP. Sheriff's office is increasing eight hundred fifty-one thousand three fifteen. They're transferring the corporal evidence manager from the jail budget to the sheriff. Animal control is now under sheriff, maintaining a separate budget. I was going to tell y'all, but we're transferring the deputy sheriff, animal control officer from animal control budget. And then we're hiring a new position sheriff, deputy sheriff, animal control officer. Animal control budget would eliminate the animal control tenant OD part-time. This costs a moving deposit cost to five thousand five sixty-seven. Want to reorganize all. I've been, this is equipment. Figured out all that was. I don't think he asked for much equipment. And there's equipment list in here and the salary to.
Yes, I know, I know he asked for some of this.
Kind of like you see all up in, on one sheet. Social services budget is four hundred twenty-nine thousand nine sixty. Department received one position during twenty twenty-one budget. Was added their equipment, they're asked for two cars, vans, and two computers. The federal will pay, federal dollars will pay fifty-four thousand seven fifty-six. The state dollars will be three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars, and the county will be forty-nine thousand seven fifty-three. Of this equipment. And, um, and then I list all the budgets that are under DSS, just like I did health. The total's three million seven seventy-one eight ninety-eight, a four, uh, increase of four hundred fifty-one thousand six ninety-eight. Reason we don't lease their vans is because of how the state makes you do vehicles for them. You have to have a hundred thou- hundred thousand miles for ten years old. It used to be an or, now it's or. Um, and they didn't know how they could run that lease payment through their stuff, so we choose not to do theirs through the lease program. Their other budget, is that vans and cars or just vans?
No, I said, I mean, you know, they have that.
Yeah.
They get state funding. That kind of, that kind of is a no brainer on the leasing.
There are other budgets, aid to the blind, an increase hundred fifty-five, daycare is MOE money. That's maintenance. Effort money is that we have to budget. Uh, preventing, receive federal state funding. Medical assistance budget did not increase, even though she asked for increase. If they ha- they haven't had an error in two years that we had to pay for, so we've not, we just put a certain amount out there for the payments we had to make, and if they have an error pop up, we have to pay something. If it's over that amount, then we just do a budget, and like I said, we've not had a big amount. Uh, public assistance increased two thousand seven one hundred ten thousand seven thirty-three, and that's these as the cardinal special foster care and IVE foster care.
Which is. This is an increase.
Public waste decrease eighty-two thousand three eleven. They're asking for zero return loan loan. We're going to finance green boxes of sixteen and twenty-four. We've not thawed green boxes in three years. A roll-off that caught on fire, we're replacing it, and then another roll-off. And a tractor. We're mowing these sites and, uh, and new buildings in Sandy Ridge and the. Due to the buildings are getting all up and down, that these workers are working out of. Special. And increase twenty-seven thousand one sixteen. J, JCTC, juvenile criminal partnership. It decreased. The wirebady went up a thousand dollars. The basic violence stayed the same. Parks service went up twenty-two thousand seven hundred, that's due to a truck purchase request. King Senior Center increased one thousand thirteen. We matched the same amount. I'll be matching for the QACCB E funding that Wannecote Senior Center did. We matched the funding. Uh, Stokes Fire Association increased two thousand dollars. And with sale, urban, MPO and RPO, they didn't change that much.
Hey Julie, could you go back to social services? I got one quick question. Um, your public assistance, is that a million four forty-four or two forty-four increase?
That's public assistance.
Is that an increase that?
Yes, that's the county's portion only.
Oh, okay, because in the budget, it goes a big amount.
Yeah, that's the general fund appropriation only.
Okay.
That's taken out any state or federal monies we get.
Yeah, because in the budget, it goes from two eight to four nine.
Yeah, because that's including the.
And that's the other funds, okay.
I just try to show what the county's proportioning, or the general fund proportioning, because that has the federal state monies in it.
Why go so much?
I was carding. That's a million one.
They're funding that.
Two one.
They're funding that.
Yeah. Okay. All right, go ahead.
My whole, oh, wrong one. Sorry. The period court budget increase without, we had to pay the jury commissioners this year. We pay them every other year, it's a thousand dollars. And then they got a maintenance security, we got to pay a maintenance on a security system we got for the DA's office. Uh, tax, we're purchasing two computers. Bowing, transferring, uh, it increased nine thousand seven eighty-six. Transferring nine eleven eight twenty to the new school F tech fund. That's per the model. Uh, that's that five-year amount. And then health title nineteen is five ninety-one five sixty-six. Because I haven't got the Medicaid cost settlement yet. Um, we don't even get that from DUI office. Uh, then MOE is three ninety-eight eight twenty. Those are the only funds. I'm not transferring any funds to capital reserve this year. Vehicle maintenance, uh, increase, and that's computer, and then transferring purchasing class. Project managers position seventy-five twenty-five. Better service, just salary.
Amy, do you have any idea if, uh, there's a big demand there that he's being able to cover, or we need more, more help there? Veteran service?
He's not said anything to me about that. You know, and you know, where we increased his hours last year, that was, that really helped a lot. And he's, he's, uh, he's really done a good job. And he does help his, ours issues with the.
He up every day.
We up this hour, you know, what year before last.
Yeah, we up this hour, so he's up four days a week.
Hundred and twenty hours.
Four days a week.
Uh, new schools by tech four cent fund. We transferring two million five eighty-nine oh seventy-three for debt service and general fund. By tech annual operations of three eleven nine fifty-seven. We're transferring the school current.
Includes the new welding building or technical building? This three eleven includes the new building they just opened?
Uh, we didn't pay for that by tech then.
We have to do operations on it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, sir, yeah.
It does include that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, I know what you're asking about. You're asking about the operating costs, all right. I thought you was talking about the debt. I did. Then transfer the school fund of eighty-nine thousand two hundred for popper screen. Three hundred eleven thousand two, fund balance is appropriated to fund debt and operating expense. That estimated fund balance is two million five forty-four one ninety-eight. I had estimated that to be at, possibly at the end of June thirtieth. Fire department, you can see what they requested and it's still eight cents. Team's not using any fund balance. Rule hall's not, Wannecote is. Thirty-eight thousand oh sixty-three, and their fund balance is about seventy-one oh seventy. Service district. Uh, they did not use any fund balance. It's estimated about two hundred ninety-four thousand four eighty-three in there, possibly by June thirtieth. Talking about doing, looking at some stuff with the service district. Um, capital reserve transfer. Transferring five thousand four twenty-three for vehicle maintenance. Fifty-one hundred dollars for the jail. To general fund. Uh, public buildings for the general, and all that stuff, two hundred thirty-five thousand, animal trolls, seven hundred eight. Appropriating fund balance of fifteen thousand one sixty-nine to fund some of the capital stuff in general fund. Other funds, regional sewer. They want a tractor fifty percent, uh, sewer, fifty percent water. That's for, uh, mowing these kind of everything. So it's rentals, we don't have a contract anymore. That was completed. The only thing I bused in there is they still get some money from a debt, uh, from a where they turn over some bills to somebody and that comes in, and then we have to pay that person. So I just did a thousand dollars there. Amber and water decreased, but they're doing this truck, and then E nine one one decreased three hundred four thirty thousand, and then find the equipment that you can buy from that. I don't know when all that's going to transfer to the state yet, but it's supposed to.
What, what's going to transfer to the state?
E nine.
What's going to transfer to the state?
The E nine one one, you know, a lot of that was, you know, she came up here and talked to the board about that school transfer, and we want, we'll have to, but that's not happening.
Hadn't happened yet. I forgot about that.
Of course, they'll take our funding when they do that.
You won't have the headache though, right?
Huh?
You won't have as big a headache.
No, me and them go around and round on that report every year, trust me. I made Dale do it this year. I mean, they're just looking at our nineteen report. We had to have them to them by September. And they're just looking at nineteen. They hadn't even started on twenty yet, so. That's, that's another. And capital projects, cap projects is put into capital project funds, but we will still have to do ordinances if we do any of this. Uh, in this, we have put animal control shelter building, park facility study of four hundred fifty thousand estimated. Does the board want to put seventy thousand dollars into repair the floor, eighteen thousand to pile act, to panel? And if you build a new shelter at the current location, you might have to do a, you might have to do something to the set it. Because it's being pumped out four times a year. And also, uh, animal control supervisor said the water over there was not good, that run water and then ten minutes turn shallow. You probably had to drill a new well. So, I mean, I don't know if the board wants to relocate the animal shelter and get it out from over there, because all I hear is we have to go to landfill to get it off. So, I mean, it's just. Then there's roof projects, uh, DSS roof, Reagan building roof, old courthouse roof, and hospital roof. But there's something about the hospital roof we might can take off.
They're still, they're trying to seek insurance or coverage.
So that might can come out on your capital project. But see, we would probably finance all those anyways, so. Maybe in a lump sum.
What did they, is covered in the marriage?
This, these all projects. And that's it. Y'all have any questions?
Your online report for budget discussion there? Yeah, I'll answer a couple of things, um. Yeah, I, I had a question about the fund balance and how many months, so we've already talked about that. If you found out what.
Got that wrote down.
How much we have to have to cover three months of operating expenses. Um, the revale, the way I calculated it on that sheet that was in the, uh, I think it's in the budget message, if you may check that out. The little section on page two of the budget message, if you add all those together, if you just double-check on that, that, I think that's a four point oh nine cent increase in taxes, right? Property taxes.
Are you referring revenue neutral or the?
Uh-huh, it would, not going revenue neutral, it's a four. It's just about a cent tax increase.
Just about, yes. Does that sound right? The way I'm looking at it, Commissioner Morris, is if you done revenue neutral on the seventy-four cent rate on everything, you would cut it down to seventy cents. That's four cents any time.
Yeah, okay.
Because each one of those tax rates affected that.
Yeah, they all totaled property, they're all property taxes. They're for different purposes. We don't have anything, any funds designated for internet expansion, but at the same time, if we, no, we might shoot our foot if we did that, if we funded out this other thing. So that's probably, probably the way to go.
I think we didn't do it because of the COVID monies, saying you can use it for broadband.
Yeah, the A, the ARP. Air and Rescue Plan money. We don't have any, any other money left with that, all we got is the ARP money that's coming right here. So I guess we need to get an ARP out for the internet, so we'll be ready to do that. Ask some salary study questions in a regular meeting, you guys are going to work on, if you'll work on that for one of our budget sessions. Those three questions, remember what they were? When you, you were talking about the, uh, the actual fifty-five hundred dollars. Yeah, about that and also about those departments that got reduced after the first thing came in.
That was due to their not appointed positions.
Well, that's not a justification for me, I'd like to understand that better. I don't know what that even means, appointed positions. They're all hired the same way. Or whatever.
They don't have as many responsibilities as the appointed positions, in my opinion.
I disagree with that.
Their duties are different.
Why did, uh, why did they not figure out that the first time they sent this thing in? They went through the whole process that everybody else went through. I'd like to get a better explanation.
People got moved up above appointed positions and nothing was done about the appointed positions. I mean, I didn't have any plan to do.
Well, what I don't understand is they went through the process, just like everybody else did, and the first time the salary study came in, they said they would be this level, and all of a sudden, they come back and change it. And I, I just like a good explanation, because I know what all these departments do, and I don't see the difference personally. I'd like to, you know, get a better explanation that we don't have to discuss it today. A better explanation of why those, those two or three departments were downgraded. And then also on the compression pay, I'd like to understand.
The rationale, you know, where.
Doesn't seem like it's quite fair across the board with people that have worked here for ten or twenty years. They changed jobs a year before, they got no compression pay, and then somebody else got reclassified a few months earlier out of the budget cycle, and they did get compression pay. I'd like to kind of understand that.
It was based on their salary at the time. When they took the new position, they got the years of service when they went to the new position. So their salary was way above, even the above, and to the years, they hadn't been in that new position a year yet.
You just need to show me all that in detail, if anybody does.
You're talking about a specific person, but I mean.
Yeah, I am to a free specific.
We didn't do anybody different.
Yeah, I just, I, I questioned where the whole process was fair or not, the way it was done, even by what was recommended.
Well, to me, if, I mean, this is my opinion, if somebody changed, and this is what Darlene and I had to do on the other thing that we had to do where people got frozen. We had to look at when the person went and who the position, and if they changed positions, they didn't get credit for that. And that's, to me, I think we did it the same way, in my opinion.
I had several people talk to me individually about it, and then I know one of them got back and got changed. And the other one didn't, so I, I don't, I don't trust the process without some further explanation. We get together and talk about the intangibles that y'all.
I don't know about that. I'm just saying, I know what I did in the calculating area.
I'll just come to meet with y'all and discuss it then, and I would, I'd like the rest of the board.
I've been approached from Saturday, that's Saturday, so.
Then, and then I think there's thirty-something employees that didn't get any increase out of the salary study.
They got five hundred dollars.
I'd like to kind of understand why that, is there some that didn't get anything or not, everybody got something?
If they were scheduled not to get anything, they got five hundred dollars. And that was due to they had changed positions.
How did they change their positions though?
Got reclassified into another person, their job got reclassified because their duties changed.
Which knocked them out of the compression pay. I'll come meet with y'all on that. Once I understand it, then I'll discuss it with the rest of you guys, if I think it was fair or not. On your budget, only other question I have today, on your budget sheets you put in there for school capital, you listed all the capital projects, are they prioritized or are they random?
I take it that list was right off their list, and I take it was prioritized.
Opted up?
Yeah, and I took it right off their sheet that they sent up here. Looking your, uh.
What page is that, eighty something?
The blue folder.
I'm gonna look on your sheet.
I copied it right off their, I copied it right off, yeah, it's prioritized, yes, yes it is. I took it right off their sheet.
I think we're about to, you should have been one, I don't think anybody will tell you questions, don't hit it.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Okay.
All right. If there's no further, I get much. Discussion, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, thank you. Hopefully I will. Remax will keep working.
Yeah, we're marking up the mean books.
Be nice. I'll take it.
It's next week, what, at three o'clock, yeah? At three, I was marking that.
I'll know, yeah, I'll send you all the dates for next week, too.
I might just mark it down, or?
Well, tomorrow, Thursday's originally was three, and then we moved to.
It's about two.
Somebody could do.
June twenty-second is at three o'clock, Wayne. June twenty-second is at three o'clock.